Okay, so it looks like we're good to go.
Yes, we are.
Okay. Uh, so I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Uh, before we really begin tonight, I want to make a formal apology to Lisa Montroy, our male delivery person. At our last meeting, when trying to determine why the municipal, uh municipality did not receive a council flyer, I suggested that it might be because the male person was shirking their responsibilities. I just want to say that, uh, Lisa provides exemplary mail services at the municipal office and throughout the rest of the municipality. Uh, so next item on the agenda is number two. Does anyone have any written disclosure of pecuniary conflict of interest? Uh, councillor Cross?
No, I don't.
Councillor Maxwell?
No, I don't.
Councillor Olmstead?
I don't think so.
Okay, and councillor Shippam?
No.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is item three, petitions and delegations, of which we have none. And then item number four, uh, is reports from municipal offices. So tonight, we have a presentation, uh, of the integrity commissioner reports, and they will be provided by, um, Colleen Hannigan. Uh, so I'm gonna turn the floor over to, uh, Colleen at this time.
Uh, looks like she's disappeared, I'm not sure why.
We'll give her a couple of minutes to, uh, log back in because, uh, without her, there's not much reading, reason of going on.
She just joined again, so she should be here.
She lives at the bottom of a hill in a subdivision, and, uh, this is her first Zoom experience there, so, um, you know.
My apologies for that, I'm, I'm back, I think, can you hear me?
Yes. So, welcome back, Colleen.
Thank you.
I'm gonna hand the, uh, meeting over to you for you to do your presentations at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and my apologies, um, good evening, everyone, and, um, I hit the, it, something popped up on my screen and I said, "Go away," and you guys all went away, so, wasn't meant to happen that way. Anyway, my name is, as you know, Colleen Hannigan, um, I'm a consultant for working with E4M tonight, and I will be reading the three integrity commissioner reports into the minutes of this evening's council meeting. So I hope I don't put you all to sleep, but, um, I'll do my best to be interesting, at least. The reports will be forwarded to Ms. Pijou tomorrow morning, and Tammy Elbers is also, he, she's a director with E4M, as you know, and she's with us tonight as an observer, and I, she almost had to do the presentation, so. Before we start, I thought, um, since you don't know who I am, I thought I'd give you a little bit of background as to who I am and how I ended up at your table tonight. I have thirty years of experience in local and provincial government, and I recently retired from ten years as a CAO in a small municipality of about eighteen hundred people in British Columbia, where I still do some subdivision consulting work for them. I am in Ontario at the moment, um, I live on Manitoulin Island. I recently, um, moved here with my husband, and, uh, I am a registered professional planner. I spent fifteen years in the various departments with the town of Huntsville, where I was born and raised, and, so I can kinda say I'm from northern Ontario, but it depends on what, uh, decade you're talking about, because there were times when we, when Huntsville was put in the north and then back in the south, and, and, um, anyway, I'm in the north now. I went to school in North Bay, in high school in North Bay, and actually raced at Mount Antwan downhill skiing, and obviously played basketball against Ottawa. My husband and I currently, as I said, reside on Manitoulin, and that's a little bit about me, so I thought it would be helpful for you to know who you're listening to. The first report I will be reading tonight is, um, an allegation of a contravention of municipality of Calvin's Code of Conduct by Mayor Ian Pennell, and I will start here. So, I'm going to read it basically word for word into the record, and, um, at the end of the meeting, the reports will be submitted to, or tomorrow morning, the reports will go to the Clerk Treasurer for, um, special at that time. So the request for inquiry, on June twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-one, E4M, as integrity commissioner, received a formal request for inquiry hereinafter called the request, that alleged Ian Pennell, Mayor Pennell, a member of council for the municipality of Calvin, contravened the municipality of Calvin Code of Conduct when he attempted to deceive council as he sought reimbursement for a telephone expense. I just wanna check, can everyone hear me all right? Yeah, okay. The quester alleged that Mayor Pennell contravened section seven-eleven, use of municipal property, services, and other resources of the Code of Conduct. The quester more specifically alleged that during the May twelfth and June ninth, twenty-twenty-one council meetings, uh, that was later corrected to twenty-twenty, Mayor Pennell attempted to deceive council by submitting personal telephone expenses as vehicle expenses. And further, the quester stated that, "I believe this is, this, the incident is a serious breach of conduct and perhaps criminal." The findings and conclusion to this, the quester in this matter made a very serious allegation that Mayor Pennell's actions were fraudulent and perhaps criminal when he submitted an expense claim to be reimbursed for long-distance charges. Then, when interviewed by the investigator, the quester failed to provide sufficient evidence to support and in fact contradicted the assertions made when requesting the inquiry. "We do not find that Mayor Pennell's actions in requesting reimbursement for expenses incurred for attending electronic council meetings are in any way inappropriate, nor do we find his actions contrary to the Code of Conduct for the expense to be included on the only form the municipality used for members of council to seek reimbursement for out-of-pocket expenses. We do, however, find the quester's intentions questionable and are highly concerned that while the quester reported his complaint in, was no rate, was no, in no way retaliatory, we question the motives to make such allegations in the first place. And the conclusion is this matter is dismissed. The inquiry process that was followed, upon receipt of the request, we completed an initial review of the quester's submission. Allegations of deceit and fraudulent submission of expenses for reimbursement are serious allegations and could be subject to a police investigation. If an integrity commissioner finds such a potential contravention of law, they must stop their inquiry and refer the matter to the police. In this circumstance, after we conducted our initial review, as is outlined in the Integrity Commissioner Inquiry Protocol, we conducted a preliminary review and the matter was assigned to Gil Hughes, and, uh, here and after, I'll call him the investigator, an investigator with Investigative Solutions Network, ISN. As an agent of the integrity commissioner for this purpose and to further review and consider the allegations, the investigator interviewed the quester, the clerk treasurer, and Mayor Pennell. Additionally, the investigator reviewed pertinent municipal records related to the matter. The conclusions we arrived at with respect to these matters are based upon the standard of a balance of probabilities. Balance of probabilities is a civil burden of proof, meaning that there's evidence to support the allegation that the comments or conduct more likely than not, in other words, more than fifty percent, took place, and that the behavior is a breach of the municipality's Code of Conduct. As required, assessments of credibility have been made, and these assessments are based on whether or not the individual has firsthand knowledge of the situation, whether or not the individual had an opportunity to observe the events, whether or not the individual may have bias or other motive, the individual's inability to clearly describe the events, consistency within the story, the attitude of the individual as they're participating, and any admission of dishonesty. The investigator reported that the quester rated a year to report an issue they submitted was in serious breach, is a serious breach of conduct and perhaps criminal, and that had been properly addressed during two council meetings. During an interview with the investigator, the quester made it very clear that he was lacking commitment to his complaint, therefore essentially undermining the matter he wanted investigated. The quester was not considered a credible with witness on this matter. The findings of fact, the quester alleged that Mayor Pennell on, May ju, May twelfth and June ninth, twenty-twenty-one deceived council by attempting to pass his phone expenses off as a vehicle expenses, and by dividing the bill into two to appear less conspicuous. And just a note there, the meetings and questions were in twenty-twenty, not twenty-twenty-one, I believe it was just a typo by the quester. However, we state them as they come in and, um, just make a note that the, that it was corrected. The reference for that was the request for inquiry dated June twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-one. The quester further provided, at the May ninth meeting, our worship Mayor Pennell submitted a vehicle expense of two-hundred-and-forty-five dollars, twenty cents on the expense report of May sixth. The expense was questioned by a few councillors. The mayor got loud and stated that he would declare a conflict of interest to appease councillor Olmstead, who was insisting on an explanation. At that time, I assumed it was probably mileage cost for an out-of-town meeting. On June nine, another mysterious vehicle expense of one-hundred-and-ninety-four-eighty appeared from Mayor Pennell on the June fourth expense report. At this meeting, after more questioning, it was finally revealed that the vehicle expense was actually a long-distance telephone charge, which the mayor had received due to signing in with the wrong number for a Zoom meeting. Thus, he had received a four-hundred, nearly four-hundred-dollar bill in long-distance charges, council was understanding and passed the report. Now, that's, um, that's an actual quote from the request document, and that was from the request for inquiry dated June twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-one. When interviewed by the investigator, the quester was unsure whether their allegations against Mayor Pennell were a breach of the Code of Conduct and had remorse regarding the cost and of an investigation to the taxpayers. The quester said that although they did not agree with the mayor's decision, they believed Mayor Pennell was an honest man. The quester added that any result of the event investigation would have been light and meaningless. And that's from the review, interview of the quester. This is also from that interview, the quester stated that they took issue with the two telephone expenses, one ninety-four-eighty and two forty-five-twenty, that were submitted as vehicle expenses. Even though they had no doubt that Mayor Pennell's telephone expenses were legitimate and were satisfied with the explanation, but advised that they would have preferred that it had been done during the initial challenge by councillor Olmstead on May twelfth, twenty-twenty. On one hand, the quester thought the telephone expense might have been a filing error, but on the other hand, he believed it should have been disclosed during the first meeting. That is also from the interview of the quester. Mayor Pennell confirmed with the investigator that the two long-distance, long-distance bills valued at two forty-five-twenty and one ninety-four-eighty resulted from mistakenly connecting to what he thought were toll-free numbers during council-related Zoom meetings from his home. Mayor Pennell recalled the telephone bill being astronomical and was divided into two parts, because the second part of the bill fell outside of the first billing period. He advised the bills were submitted to the clerk treasurer as phone bills, not vehicle expenses, and his wife char, changed their long-distance plan in order to enable unlimited long-distance calling for thirty-five dollars per month to make sure it didn't happen again. The references from the interview of Mayor Pennell. The clerk treasurer confirmed that Mayor Pennell had submitted the phone bills for reimbursement, that the charges were included on the mayor's expenses form, and that unfortunately the form at the time was only set up to capture vehicle slash travel expenses and not other miscellaneous expenses a member of council might incur. That's from the interview of the clerk treasurer. The matter was brought to council on both occasions and put to a vote, which was subsequently passed. And that was from both the interview of the clerk treasurer and from Mayor Pennell. At May twelfth, at the May twelfth, twenty-twenty council meeting, Mayor Pennell made the following declaration. Conflict of interest. Mayor Pennell declared a conflict of interest on agenda item number ten, accounts approval report, and the reason, made declaration, and a quote, "Made declaration to ease concern of councillor Olmstead regarding an expense submitted by me," unquote, from the interview of the clerk treasurer. Members of the council, members of council are required to declare pecuniary interest in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act, the MCIA, and pecuniary interest is not defined in, defined in the MCIA, however, the courts have interpreted, interpreted to mean a financial interest or an interest relating to or involving money. It does not matter whether the financial interest is positive or negative, and when considering the existence of a pecuniary interest, it also does not matter the quantum of the interest. Pecuniary interest is not defined in the Municipal Contract, Conflict of Interest Act, RSO nineteen-ninety, CM fifty, but it has been held to be a financial, monetary, or economic interest and is not to be narrowly defined. A pecuniary interest is, as used in section five-one of the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act, RSO nineteen-ninety, CM fifty, is a particular kind of interest, and this is from a court case in Edmonton City versus Purvis, that turns to, uh, shorter Oxford English Dictionary definition of pecuniary as of belonging to or having relation to money. So section four of the MCIA provides certain situations in which a member does not need to declare pecuniary interest. In this circumstance, section four-one of, would apply, which states, "In respect of an allowance for attendance at meetings or any other allowance, honorarium, remuneration, salary, or benefit to which the member may be entitled by reason of being a member or as a member of a volunteer fire brigade, as the case may be." So, the reason, the, number twenty-five states that the mayor did not need to make a decla, declaration in this circumstance. The analysis, associated analysis, the quester waited a full year to bring forward a matter they claimed to believe the incident is a serious breach of contact, conduct, and perhaps criminal, and further, the quester submitted that in no way was his complaint retaliatory, retaliatory in nature, but thought it was an issue that should be addressed even at this late date. The quester alleged to believe Mayor Pennell's long-distance telephone bills were falsely submitted as vehicle expenses in an attempt to cover up his claim for personal phone bills, and further, that the, a matter had been considered and approved by the council, by council resolution. It is clear that this matter had already been addressed by council and the clerk treasurer sufficiently explained the use of the expense form, and that it was not an attempt to deceive council, and the report is dated September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one. And that's all for that report. The next report from the integrity commissioner for the municipality of Calvin is an allegation of the contravention of the municipality of Calvin Code of Conduct by councillor Daniel Maxwell. I hope I said Daniel right. The request for inquiry was on, on May fourteenth, twenty-twenty-one. Expertise for municipalities, E4M, as integrity commissioner, received a formal request for inquiry hereinafter called the request, that alleged Daniel Maxwell, councillor Maxwell from here in, as a member of council for the municipality of Calvin, contravened the municipality of Calvin's Code of Conduct, and the quester alleged that councillor Maxwell during a closed session of council did make heated and inappropriate comments towards other members of council. The quester more specifically alleged that during the May eleventh, twenty-twenty-one closed portion of the council meeting, councillor Maxwell insulted the members of the former council and specifically Mayor Pennell when councillor Maxwell made inflammatory, inflammatory statements that past council and past councillors did not like a certain community resident, past council and past councillors would not work with this resident regarding his request for additional service, and past council and councillors' past bylaws that would prevent the requested service to occur. Further in doing so, also insulted current members of council who were on council during the timeframes councillor Maxwell was referring to in the above-mentioned allegations. The quester was also, also reported that this was the third time such, third such time councillor Maxwell had made such statements in a council meeting. The findings and conclusion on this inquiry, based on the evidence before us, we find that councillor Maxwell did use indecent abusive or insulting words, tone, or expression toward past councillor, council and councillors during the May eleventh, twenty-twenty-one closed portion of the council meeting, and he thereby violated section seven-point-two of the Code of Conduct. Additionally, councillor Maxwell did contravene section six-point-one and six-point-two of the Code of Conduct, which requires him to be civil and respectful in meetings and to respect the decision-making process. Councillor Maxwell is also required to communicate the attitudes and decisions of council accurately and adequately, even if he disagrees with a majority decision of council. Recommendations. Upon finding a breach of the Code of Conduct, section two-two-three-point-four, section five subsection five of the Municipal Act, two thousand and one, permits council to levy a penalty of either a reprimand or a suspension of the remuneration paid to the member in respect of his services as a member of council for a period of up to ninety days for each breach. Council was present for and witnessed the behavior of councillor Maxwell, and is in a better position than the integrity commissioner to measure the offense and the appropriate penalty. Section five-point-seven-seven of the Integrity Commissioner Inquiry Protocol provides that council may impose any of the following penalties. One, a reprimand. Two, suspension of remuneration paid to the member for, for a period of up to ninety days. Three, other penalties including but not necessarily limited to, removal from membership of a committee or local board, removal as chair, as chair of a committee or local board, required repayment or reimbursement of run, monies received, return of property or reimbursement of its value, request for an apology to council, the quester, or another relevant party, revocation of travel or other budget, request for resignation, trespass order restricting access except for council meetings. Additionally, we recommend that council consider recording their closed-session meetings. This is a best practice supported by the ombudsman. The inquiry process. Upon receipt of the request, we completed an initial review of the application and the accompanying materials supplied, submitted by the quester, and determined that there were sufficient grounds to conduct an inquiry into the matter. The matter was assigned to Pete Gauthier, the investigator, and investigator with Investigative Solutions Network, ISN, as an agent of the Intenti, integrity commissioner, who interviewed the quester, the respondent, and the other attendees of the May eleventh, twenty-twenty-one closed portion of, closed meeting, of the council meeting. Those present at the meeting were Mayor Pennell, councillors Sandy Cross, Daniel Maxwell, the respondent, and Heather Olmstead, as well as clerk treasurer Cindy Pijou. The investigator also considered portions of the recorded council meetings dated April twenty-seventh, May eleventh, and June twenty-second of twenty-twenty-one. The conclusions that the investigator arrived at with respect to this matter are based on the standard of a balance of probabilities. Again, as required, assessments of credibility have been made, these assessments are based on whether or not the individual has firsthand knowledge of the situation, whether or not the individual had an opportunity to observe the events, whether or not the individual may have bias or other motive, the individual's ability to clearly describe the events, consistency within the story, the attitude of the individual as they're participating, and any admission of dishonesty. After obtaining all of the above evidence, the investigator reviewed it along with the quester's witnesses and respondent's statements. Each were assessed for their credibility. The investigator found the majority of the witnesses to be credible. They cooperated in the investigation, were straightforward, and did not attempt to deceive the investigator. Additionally, they provided appropriate supporting evidence. Findings of fact. Council met in closed session on May eleventh, twenty-twenty-one. In accordance with the meeting agenda, the purpose of the closed meeting was as follows, and this is a quote. "This closed meeting of council has been called by Mayor Pennell as per section two-thirty-nine-two B of the Municipal Act for the purpose of personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees, as per section two-thirty-nine-two-D of the Municipal Act for the purpose of labor relations or employing negotiations, and as per section two-thirty-nine-two, uh, one, of a trade, a trade secret or scientific, technical, commercial, financial, or labor relations information supplied in confidence to the municipality of lo, or local board, which if disclosed, could reasonably be expected to prejudice significantly the competitive position or interfere significantly with the contractual or other negotiations of a person, group, of persons, or organization." And this was respecting Stewart's Road, the twenty-twenty-one employee wage negotiations, and Castle Home. Due to the confidential nature of closed sessions, we will not articulate the specifics of the discussion other than to report that witnesses interviewed by the investigator had a very good recollection of the events that transpired during the closed session of May eleventh, twenty-twenty-one council meeting, and of the alleged comments made by councillor Maxwell. They confirmed the allegations were accurate and did in fact take place and were not out of character for councillor Maxwell. Witnesses reported that councillor Maxwell did often become heated and made inflammatory statements at council meetings in both open and closed session. One witness reported being shocked by the way councillor Maxwell spoke to Mayor Pennell and about previous council in closed session, in the closed session of May eleventh, twenty-twenty-one council meeting. Councillor Maxwell did not think he contravened the Code of Conduct during the May eleventh, twenty-twenty-one closed portion of the council meeting. He stated that the May eleventh council meeting was quite a civil meeting, and most councillors were respectful and professional and followed the Code of Conduct. Councillor Maxwell stated he abided by the rules set by the mayor, and that councillor Maxwell generally abides by these rules of conduct, Code of Conduct, and so does everyone else. He did not remember saying anything that he shouldn't have or anything that would be a breach of the Code of Conduct. Councillor Maxwell further advised the investigator that, that he did not lose his temper at the meeting or lose control of his emotions and had no outbursts. Councillor Maxwell stated that if those in attendance had been insulted by his comments, that they would talk to him about it or call him the next day. Councillor Maxwell recalled that after the meeting, councillors commented that it was a very constructive meeting and that they had a good conversation. He was surprised by the allegations because he thought the meeting went well and they had made some progress. Maxwell said that they put everything on the table, sorry, councillor Maxwell said they put everything on the table, all the facts, and they couldn't agree, but they put everything out there. He stated that he was only able to recall some of the statements that he made. The investigator found that Maxwell remembered an abundance of information from the meeting, however, he stated that he could not recall making any of the alleged comments. Councillor Maxwell blamed his own poor memory as the reason for the lack of information he was able to provide the investigator. He further added his comments were misinterpreted at the council meeting. Based on a review of the recording of the May eleventh, twenty-twenty-one council meeting after coming out of the closed portion, the investigator reported that Max, that councillor Maxwell appeared to be calm and withdrew the resolution he brought forward in the closed session portion of the meeting, stating that he was withdrawing it because of the conversation that took place. The minutes of the meeting reflect the following motion being withdrawn by councillor Maxwell. Twenty-twenty-one dash one-twenty-four, motion to proceed with maintaining Stewart's Road as a fully maintained road, moved by councillor Maxwell and councillor Olmstead, that, whereas Stewart's Road is a public road that services four properties, two of which are year-round residence, and whereas the road is used for mail delivery, school bus pickup, courier delivery, and emergency vehicle access, and whereas it's in the best interest of the municipalities to minimize the risk of liability to the township by assuring the road is safe, and whereas, as per the engineer's report, the cost to taxpayers can be minimized by bringing Stewart's Road up to the municipal standards over- Over a five year period. And whereas Stewart's Road is a unique situation from other seasonally maintained roads with residents having year round occupancy permits to reside there. Therefore, be it resolved that the corporation of the municipality of Calvin immediately assume year round responsibility for maintaining Stewart's Road north of the bridge. To Homestead Road and that the roads department will work to bring Stewart's Road up to municipal standards over the next five years. This motion was withdrawn by councillor Maxwell. Prior to adjournment, councillor Maxwell stated the following. It was a good debate. I don't take anything personal at council. I hope I didn't hurt anyone's feelings. You have to do what's right sometimes. The investigator reported that councillor Maxwell purposely avoided stating that he recalled the comments he made during the close session. He was evasive when asked specific questions regarding the comments he allegedly made. And based on the fashion in which councillor Maxwell attempted to diminish the allegations and the evidence of other witnesses. The investigator found that on a balance of probabilities, councillor Maxwell did did make the alleged insulting comments. The analysis. Members of council are held to a higher standard of ethical behaviour and are expected to hear to the code of conduct. More specifically, members of council are required to treat each other with the respect while debating a matter. Only consider matters properly before council on the agenda and support decisions once made by council. The agenda of the May eleventh twenty twenty one council meeting indicated that a closed session would be held to receive information about Stewart's Road. The issue has been a longstanding and divisive issue at the council table. It is clear that councillor Maxwell does not support the decisions of the previous and the current council. Have made with respect to the situation. However, councillor Maxwell is bound by the tenants of the code of conduct. Which require members of council to treat each other with respect and not using decent abusive or insulting words tones. Or expressions toward any other member. Additionally, sections six point one and six point two requires that members act in a civil manner and. And further that once council has decided with respect to a matter. That a member must accurately and adequately communicate the attitudes and decisions of council. Even if they disagree with a majority decision of council. It is clear in this circumstance that councillor Maxwell did not behave in a civil civil matter as he alleged. Nor did he support the decisions of council. Councillor Maxwell promoted a resolution which he later withdrew. Regarding a matter that council had previously debated and decided on, the decision which was contrary to the resolution proposed by councillor Maxwell. That's the end of this report and it's dated September thirtieth twenty twenty one. Final report tonight. Let me suck in here. Is an allegation that the contra- of contravention of the municipality of Calvin code of conduct by councillor Heather Olmstead. The request for inquiry. Expertise for municipalities E for M as integrity commissioner received three requests for inquiry. Here and after the requests with respect to Heather Olmstead councillor Olmstead. An elected member of the municipal council for the municipality of Calvin. The requesters alleged that councillor Olmstead contravened the municipality of Calvin code of conduct and. Or this council staff relations policy, the CSR. Requesters are members, the requesters are members of the public. And are therefore entitled to make an application for an inquiry under sections two two three point four of the municipal act. In the request for inquiry, the requesters alleged that councillor Olmstead contravened the code of conduct when she A. By her actions toward the road superintendent on a number of occasions contravened the CSR and the code of conduct. B, by her actions toward the road superintendent on a number of occasions contravened. The Occupational Health and Safety Act, the OHSA. C, was deceitful to a member of the public about the retrieval of her live trap. Allegations that a member of council contravened the OHSA are not within the jurisdiction of the integrity commissioner. Have not been investigated by our office and has properly been referred to the appropriate authority, however. Failure to comply with legislation and this circumstance specifically the OHSA. Does constitute a contravention of the code of conduct. Findings conclusion. Based on the evidence before us, we find that councillor Olmstead did contravene the CSR when she found to. When she was found to have breached the OHSA due to her actions toward the road superintendent. This contravention is also a breach of the code of conduct. We further find that councillor Olmstead did contravene sections seven point one and eight point one of the code of conduct. When she was found to have breached the OHSA due to her actions toward the road superintendent. We find that councillor Olmstead did contravene section one point two D. When she retrieved her live trap and then was deceitful to Ms Campbell about collecting it causing undue distress to Ms Campbell. We also find that councillor Olmstead contravened section seven point two of the code of conduct when she made disparaging remarks about councillor Cross. And other members of council when she dropped off the live trap and was speaking with Ms Campbell. Recommendations. Upon finding a breach of the code of conduct, section two two three point four dash section subsection five. Of the municipal act two thousand and one permits council to levy a penalty of either a reprimand or a subset. Subs- sorry, suspension of the remuneration paid to the member in respect of his services. As a member of council for a period of up to ninety days for each breach. The count- conduct of councillor Olmstead in these manners was astounding. She has shown not only disregard for the ethical responsibilities in the code of conduct, but. Agrarious and flagrant disregard for serious legislation like the OHSA. Further that she has not taken responsibility for any of her actions and instead blames others or attempts to legitimize. Her behaviour by deflecting or focusing on the behaviour of others. This is the second integrity commissioner inquiry related to the actions of councillor Olmstead. Wherein she was found to have contravened the code of conduct. Of significant concern is that councillor Olmstead criticized the road superintendent using the most offensive language known to our legal system. We are most concerned that this behaviour must stop. It is destructive to the operation of the municipality and is poisoning the work environment for staff. And is diverting valuable taxpayer resources from providing appropriate service. We very strongly recommend that council request that councillor Olmstead resign her position on council. It is clear that she does not acknowledge or and even denied her behaviours toward the road superintendent. As well as others involved in this inquiry. It is our opinion that her behaviour will be ongoing and will place the municipality and perhaps councillor Olmstead personally. A considerable risk of litigation. Alternatively, should council not wish to take such action or should councillor Olmstead refuse to resign council? Councils should strictly impose the following. A, with respect to the contravention of the OHSA and subsequently one point two F of the code of conduct. Our recommendation is that council suspend your remuneration for a period of ninety days for the multiple breaches. This is the maximum financial penalty we can recommend. With respect to the contravention of the CSR and the code of conduct related to her vexatious comments to and about the road superintendent. We recommend that councillor Olmstead not be allowed to participate in any performance management related to the road superintendent who currently reports to council as a whole. Be removed from all boards and committees, not be allowed to communicate with staff directly, after all communications to staff go through an anonymous. Email address and not be allowed to attend municipal office or municipal worksite where staff may be. Except for retrieving council mail packages, mail or packages. Make bill payments, attend council meetings or otherwise fulfill her statutory roles. Finally, to be be able to request the restrictions be reviewed in six months. With respect to the contraventions of section one point two D and seven point two, the council room said be required to make a public. Public apology to Ms Campbell and councillor Cross and council generally for her behaviour. We recommend that council consider adopting. An administrative or CAO model where employees report to one senior manager and only the senior manager reports to council. Inquiry process. The responsibilities of the integrity commissioner are set out in section two two three, two two three point three one of the municipal act. And on March first twenty nineteen, section two two three point two of the municipal act was amended. And municipalities were required to adopt a code of conduct. Further municipalities were to appoint integrity commissioner who is responsible for the application of the code of conduct. Complaints may be made by council, a member of council or a member of the public to the integrity commissioner for an inquiry. But whether a member has contravened the code of conduct that is applicable to that member. After receiving the comments, we followed the inquiry process as set out in the integrity commissioner inquiry protocol. We did a preliminary review of each complaint to determine if they are within the jurisdiction of the integrity commissioner. Those matters not within in the integrity commissioner's jurisdiction are referred to be considered by other appropriate authorities. In this circumstance, several allegations were referred to be investigated under the OHSA. The matters considered by our office followed a process whereby the available evidence was reviewed. The requesters, witnesses and councillor Olmstead were all interviewed. Interviews were recorded and transcriptions prepared for each individual interviewed. The request for inquiry related to the live trap and disparaging comments about councillor Cross and other members of council was assigned. Was assigned to Jane Martinock and in the alleged violations related to the road superintendent was assigned to Jamie Appleton. Who both herein will be identified generally as the investigator. Investigators are experienced investigators with investigative solutions network ISN. As agents of the integrity commissioner, they interviewed the respective requestor, witnesses and councillor Olmstead. Additionally, we also reviewed text messages, emails, social media posts and other pertinent municipal records from both open and closed sessions. As they related to the matters before us. The conclusions we arrived at with respect to these matters are based upon the standard of a balance of probabilities, balance of probabilities is a still burden of proof. Meaning that there is evidence to support the allegation that the comments or conduct more than likely not. Not fifty point one percent took place and that the behaviour is a breach of the municipality's code of conduct. As required assessments of credibility have been made, these assessments are based on. Whether or not the individual has first hand knowledge of the situation, whether or not the individual has an opportunity to observe the events. Whether or not the individual may have bias or other motive. The individual's ability to clearly describe the events, consistency within the story, the attitude of the individual as they are. Participating and any admission of dishonesty. The investigators found the requesters and the witnesses to be credible. Both investigators noted that councillor Olmstead was not credible. They reported that she would avoid responding to direct questions and further that she minimized her behaviour and deflected blame to others. That her evidence should only be accepted when it is corroborated by another witness. Finding of facts. The circumstances that give rise to the request for inquiry are that councillor Olmstead is alleged to have A. Made vexatious and unwelcome comments about councillor Cross, council generally and the road superintendent, excuse me. B, made disrespectful and potentially defamatory statements about the road superintendent to members of the public. C, by her actions toward the road superintendent on a number of occasions. Contravened the Occupational Health and Safety Act, the OHSA. And D, been deceitful to a member of the public regarding her retrieval of a lie trap, live trap. Councillor Olmstead was elected October twenty second twenty eighteen and is a first term councillor. That's the references the municipality of Calvin election results. Council was trained regarding the roles and responsibilities, council staff relationship. And the municipal conflict of interest act, MCIA, as well as their obligations under the OHSA. That's from an interview with the municipal clerk treasurer. Councillor Olmstead has been the subject of a previous request for inquiry in which she was found to have contributed. The code of conduct in her submission to council, councillor Olmstead denied any wrongdoing towards staff. And subsequently been subsequently disparaged the investigators and the investigative process. A pattern of behaviour she has repeated during this inquiry, that's from the IC inquiry report. Contravention of the Occupational Health and Safety Act. Nine of the violation, nine of the allegations received by our office were more properly considered as contraventions of the OH. Oh, HSA. Excuse me. When the integrity commissioner finds contraventions of other law, they are required to report the matter to the appropriate authority. In this circumstance, the allegations were brought before council. Investigations of this nature and the findings are statutorily confidential. It is difficult for us to reconcile this statutory requirement for confidentiality. And our duty to provide a public report to ratepayers and council. While we are aware of the OHSA investigation, we cannot report details. But it is clear that councillor Olmstead was found to contravene the OHSA and her conduct was extremely offensive. Loan and retrieval of live trap. Ms Campbell is a resident of the municipality of Calvin. On or about August twenty six to twenty eight twenty twenty, Ms Campbell posted on the social media site entitled Calvin convo. That she was looking to borrow a live animal trap, the live trap. Councillor Olmstead responded to Ms Campbell's request and indicated that councillor Olmstead had one and would drop it off. That's from the interview with Ms Campbell. Subsequently councillor Olmstead attended the residence of Ms Campbell, dropped off the live trap. While at Ms Campbell's residence councillor Olmstead, who was unknown to Ms Campbell at the time. Allegedly began to discuss local politics and to make derogatory comments about councillor Cross and other members of council. Ms Campbell cited the following example, and I quote, this is strictly a quote. She was doing more harm than good for the township. She was way too old school and not willing to bend the rules. She, the bend the rules wasn't said in those particular words, but that was the gist of it. Wasn't willing to compromise when it came to. That sounded odd because a councillor's job is to follow the rules and to make sure everything is done the way it should be done. And making no exception for anybody because they are a little closer to one person over the other. I just got the feeling very quickly I could have. It was more of a recruitment conversation and which I did not like at all. Even though I only talked to Sandy once before, I knew it was totally wrong. And whether it wasn't true about Sandy or not, I knew enough that she was a councillor and she should not be talking that way. She told me which councillors were good ones to have on a team and which ones were not. There were a couple of other councillors she said things about, I wasn't paying much attention. Um, there were a few and maybe something about the mayor. My ears perked up when she started talking about Sandy, I knew where it was going to go to. Not that I know that Sandy well, not that I know Sandy that well, I still don't, but from what I knew of her. That was dead wrong. I knew that councillors should not talk about each other that way and what was said was definitely divisive. Definitely divisive and that reference is from an actual quote from the interview of Ms Campbell. On Friday, September eighteenth twenty twenty at ten fifteen AM councillor Olmstead messaged Ms Campbell and I quote. Good morning lady, can I pop over and pick up my trap? I have a gopher to get lol. Of import, um, this is in brackets of import is that councillor Olmstead did not follow up and advise that she would be dropping by to pick up. The live trap. And that's a reference from the interview of Ms Campbell and messages between councillor Olmstead and Ms Campbell. At some point between Friday, September eighteenth twenty twenty and Friday, October twenty first twenty twenty, Ms Campbell left to go out of town. And requested that her son in law return the live trap to councillor Olmstead, which he allegedly forgot to do. That's from the interview of Ms Campbell. Councillor Olmstead reported to the investigator that she attended Ms Campbell's residence. And picked up the live trap when she and her husband were returning from Madawak. Councillor Olmstead also. Councillor Olmstead also reported to the investigator that when she and her husband arrived at Campbell property, it appeared that nobody was home and that they had not been home for some time. Councillor Olmstead stated that the live trap was broken, rusted and sitting outside. She also reported that there were dead decaying animals in the trap and that she was very upset about the condition of the trap. Councillor Olmstead did not notice the no trespassing signs on Ms Campbell's property and advised that the trap was clearly visible in the front yard by a garden about a hundred feet from the house. They collected it and left the property. Interview, that was from the interview of councillor Olmstead. On Thursday morning, on Thursday, October twenty-second, twenty twenty, at nine twenty in the morning, Ms Campbell messaged councillor Olmstead, quote, "Hi Heather, so sorry, I didn't know you had messaged me until I asked someone why I have a message I can't find. They showed me where to get it." Smiley face emoji. "I never got the cat, I had a raccoon and fox though, I left for a while and asked my son-in-law to get the trap back to you. I'm assuming he did since it's gone when I was back, when I got back, I forgot to ask him." At five oh seven councillor Olmstead sent a message back to Ms Campbell advising here that councillor Olmstead never got the trap. And that was from an interview of Ms Campbell and the messages between councillor Olmstead and Ms Campbell. On Friday, October twenty-third, twenty twenty, at seven thirty-three AM, Ms Campbell messaged back, "I asked my son-in-law, he forgot, I'll check my camera, I'll get you a trap. I love cameras." Smiley face. At eight oh nine AM that same day councillor Olmstead responded with a thumbs up. That was from the interview of Ms Campbell and messages between councillor Olmstead and Ms Campbell. Councillor Olmstead told the investigator she was still upset and her knee-jerk reaction was yes, she, meaning Ms Campbell, should be replacing it, unquote. Councillor Olmstead also felt the comments about the cameras were a reference to social media comments between councillor Cross and Ms Campbell in September. That references from the interview of councillor Olmstead. On Sunday, October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty, at seven forty-nine PM councillor Olmstead messaged, quote, "I was disappointed that I was, that it wasn't returned. Eventually I got it back." Sad-faced emoji, unquote. Ms Campbell immediately replied, quote, "Okay, good. I'll take back the one I got yesterday." Unquote. Reference from the interview of Ms Campbell, messages between councillor Olmstead and Ms Campbell. When interviewed, Ms Campbell reported to the investigator that the cameras had been moved away from the driveway to capture the road in her absence as she is the only one who lives on her road and it's a dead end. Ms Campbell also told the investigator she did see councillor Olmstead's truck on the road at one point on the security camera and this supports that councillor Olmstead did drive by but did not enter the property to retrieve her trap. Councillor Olmstead collected the live trap when she was in her car. That's from an interview, the references from the interview with Ms Campbell. Ms Campbell found it highly concerning that after, that only after she advised councillor Olmstead that the security camera footage would be viewed, reviewed, councillor Olmstead acknowledged that she had collected the live trap. That's from the interview of Ms Campbell. The investigator requested that councillor Olmstead provide a photograph of the live trap to corroborate her story about the condition of the live trap and she told the investigator that she was unable to access where it was stored due to the Ccan being frozen shut. And that's from the investigator's report. When interviewed about the circumstances councillor Olmstead blamed her actions on social media posts made by councillor Cross and Ms Campbell. Councillor Olmstead believed she, said she believed these remarks were about her. Councillor Olmstead advised being messaged by her friend Maz Lallan that these comments had been made and that they appeared to be about councillor Olmstead. Maz Lallan was unable to corroborate the story and councillor Olmstead has been blocked from councillor Cross's Facebook page, so she was unable to provide the actual social media posts. Interview with councillor Olmstead was the reference on that. The investigator was given access to councillor Cross's Facebook page and reviewed the alleged comments. It is evident from the post that the interaction between councillor Cross and Ms Campbell had nothing to do with councillor Olmstead. The interchange dealt with having security cameras when you have large dogs with big teeth. And that was from the interview from, with councillor Cross, um, and councillor Cross's Facebook page. The investigator reviewed the definition of theft as defined in section three twenty-two of the Criminal Code of Canada and did not feel the retrieval of the live track, trap constituted theft. And that's from the investigator's report. Section two of the Trespass to Property Act was also reviewed by the investigator and against that, again, the circumstances did not violate this act. Councillor Olmstead attended on the property to retrieve her personal property, which was allegedly in plain view. She did not have to go looking around the property. While there were no trespass signs posted, her actions did not support a violation. And that's also from the investigator's report. The investigator reported that, quote, "If not for the behaviour of Olmstead with Campbell in October, this complaint would likely not have occurred." However, Olmstead did lie to Campbell and caused her work and some distress, some distress about the trap. And that's directly from, unquote, from the investigator's report. The analysis. We considered A, whether councillor Olmstead contravened the CSR policy when she contravened the OHSA. B, whether councillor Olmstead contravened the Code of Conduct when she contravened the OS, OHSA. Whether councillor Olmstead contravened the Criminal Code of Canada when she retrieved the live trap from Ms Campbell's property. Whether councillor Olmstead contravened the Trespass to Property Act when she went with, without permission on to Ms Campbell's property, retrieved the live trap from Ms Campbell's property. And then down to E, whether councillor Olmstead contravened the Code of Conduct when she intentionally deceived Ms Campbell and F, where, whether councillor Olmstead contravened the Code of Conduct when she made disparaging remarks about councillor Cross and other members of council to Ms Campbell. Under the contravention of the OHSA, the Occupational Health and Safety Act, councillor Olmstead by her offensive conduct was found to have contravened the OHSA. Such contravention is also a contravention of the Code of Conduct. The following sections apply. Section one point two F of the Key Principles of the Code of Conduct requires that members comply with provincial law, the CSR and other ethical policies. B, section seven and eight, provide members with clear expectations about dealing with others. Seven, conduct respecting others. Seven point one states, every member has the duty and responsibility to treat members of the public, one another and staff appropriately without abuse, bullying or intimidation and to ensure that the municipal work environment is free from discrimination and harassment. The members shall be familiar with and comply with the municipality's workplace anti-violence, harassment and sexual harassment policy. Number eight is the conduct respecting staff and officers. Eight point one states, under the direction of the senior administrative staff and in accordance with the decisions of council, staff and officers are required to serve the municipal corporation as a whole. Every member shall be respectful of the role of staff and officers to provide advice based on political neutrality and objectivity and without undue influence from any member or group of members. Accordingly, no member shall maliciously or falsely injure or impugn the professional or ethical reputation of any staff, person or officer. We therefore find that councillor Olmstead has contravened the Code of Conduct. Regarding the loan and retrieval of a live trap, the investigators, the investigator considered whether or not councillor Olmstead's action when she entered onto private property and retrieved the live trap was a contravention of the Criminal Code of Canada or the Trespass Property, Trespass to Property Act and found that in this circumstance, there were no grounds to substantiate a breach of the noted laws and the matter was not referred to the OPP. Number two, the question then became whether or not councillor Olmstead contravened the Code of Conduct when she went on private property to retrieve her live trap without the knowledge of the property owner and then when asked by the property owner denied that she picked up the live trap. Of consideration is whether or not the Code of Contract applied, Code of Conduct applied to councillor Olmstead when she deceived Ms Campbell by telling her that councillor Olmstead was not in possession of the live trap when in fact she was. And further, when councillor Olmstead made disparaging remarks about councillor Cross and councillor generally, to, and council generally to Ms Campbell. Councillor Olmstead was not acting in her capacity as a member of council when she loaned Ms Campbell of the, the live trap. She did it, she did so as a private citizen. And councillor Olmstead did not advise Ms Campbell that councillor Olmstead was a councillor. Ms Campbell was aware that councillor Olmstead was on council and was disconcerted that councillor Olmstead would disparage councillor Cross and council to someone who is a stranger. Section one point two D of the Key Principles states, members are expected to conduct themselves and perform their duties in office and arrange their private affairs in a manner that promotes public confidence and will bear close public scrutiny. We find that councillor Olmstead acted contrary to this principle when she intentionally deceived Ms Campbell about having possession of the live trap. Additionally, councillors are entitled to having a personal opinion about political and other matters. However, it is inappropriate and contrary to the core principles of the Code of Conduct for a member of council to disparage or make false statements about another member of council. To be clear, section seven point two requires that a member not use indecent, abusive or insulting words, tone or expression, expressions toward any other member, any municipal staff or any member of the public. We find that councillor Olmstead's statements about councillor Cross and councillor, council generally were inappropriate and contrary to the Code of Conduct. And that is the end of the final report and it was dated September thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you very much for those reports. Uh, so it's my understanding we'll receive those tomorrow at the office. Um, uh, and mail them up at a future meeting. Uh, our next item on the agenda is, uh, reports from committees, of which we have none. Uh, next item after that is number six, action letters, uh, which we have none. Uh, item number seven, information letters, we have none. Item number eight, uh, information letters available, there are none. Uh, nine, old and new business, none. Ten, accounts approval report, there are none. Uh, eleven is a closed portion of which we have none. Uh, and obviously twelve, business arising from a closed session, we have none. There are no notice of motions. Uh, so the next item on the agenda is the adjournment of the meeting. Uh, so I need a mover and a seconder, uh, to adjourn the meeting at this time. Uh, councillor Cross, can you move, uh, this, please?
Yes, I can.
And councillor Olmstead, could you second it, please? Yes, okay, thank you. Uh, so we have this resolution moved by councillor Cross and seconded by councillor Olmstead that this special meeting of council now be adjourned at eight oh three PM. Uh, any discussion on this from any of the councillors? Uh, councillor Cross?
No discussion.
Councillor Maxwell?
No discussion.
Councillor Olmstead?
No discussion.
And councillor Shipman?
No discussion.
Okay, uh, so we'll vote to close the meeting at eight oh three PM. Councillor Cross, do you vote yes or no?
Yes.
Councillor Maxwell, do you vote yes or no?
Yes.
Councillor Olmstead, do you vote yes or no? And councillor Shipman, do you vote yes or no?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Uh, so this resolution is carried, uh, and this meeting of council now be adjourned at eight oh three PM. Thanks everyone for attending. Have a good evening.
Good night.